Okay, great. Well, I guess we'll just announce when Brenda's here. Okay, the hour of 7:30 is now here. It's actually 7:32 by my watch. So I'd like to call to order this business meeting from the Board of Education for Tuesday, June 16th, 2020. Could I have a roll call, please?
Member Demmett?
Here.
Member Patton?
Here.
Member Plaski?
Here.
Member Fisher is here. Vice President Exum?
She's here. Tori?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
I'm here.
Okay, good. And President Hall?
Here. And we do believe that Member Carter is going to be here in just a moment. I think she might have some technical issues, so we'll hear from her in a minute. Do we have any additions, corrections, or modifications of tonight's agenda?
No changes to the agenda itself, but there is that one revision in personnel.
Okay. I will. Do I need to mention it by name, or just?
It is, I don't think so. It was just a change from a resignation to a retirement.
Gotcha. Okay. Citizen statements. We have one emailed citizen statement for tonight, as far as I know. It's the only one. This one is coming from Amina Payne, who emailed to say, "My name is Amina. I am a 2007 UHS graduate, now a tertiary higher education educator. I'm emailing to earnest your support for the removal of SROs within UHS. The Board committed to spending $1,813 plus $321,300 per year to fund presence without evidence of return on any value in terms of arrangement or deep end.
Okay, got it.
"The mere presence of police in schools serves to reinforce and accelerate the school-to-prison pipeline, and this is supported by data. In 2016, black students represented 15% of enrollment in public schools across the country, yet they accounted for 31% of students who were referred to law enforcement or arrested." That is a statistic from the U.S. Department of Education's Civil Rights Data. "I urge you to revisit the issue again this fall, especially as the reality of the budget shortfall needs to be addressed. For many, school is the only place to access mental health counseling and support. Prioritize the engagement, health, and well-being of U.S. students. Eliminating the contract with Urbana Police Department will allow for resources to be reallocated to the supports that students truly need. I hope to hear back from you." With warm regards from Amina Payne, and she gives her degrees, which unfortunately I can read Certified Education Graduate, but the other ones I'm not sure about. She's also a e-learning advisor and vocational education trainer and assessor. In addition to that, I know that several of us, if not all of us, have also received several emails over the past few days echoing the same sentiment. So I just wanted to let it be known to the public that we've all heard these and received them all in due fashion. I think that the superintendent might have another couple of words to say during superintendent's report. Okay, moving on to 5.0. Do we have a call for an executive session after tonight's current meeting?
No.
Nope. Okay, seeing none, then I would like to request approval of tonight's agenda.
Second. We've got to do everything roll call.
Thank you, Ruth Ann. Yes. Remember, the actual, just for our viewing public, the new statutes come out from the state. Is it ISBE or the Governor's Office? I can't remember.
New state law for all, man.
State law that requires that all public meetings take votes by roll call rather than by consent. So if everybody just be patient, that's how we'll get through tonight's meeting.
If the remotes type meetings, if you were, if it was an in-person meeting, it wouldn't be this way.
Right, because we're doing this remotely, yes. Thank you. If I worded that badly, if there's any clarifications, sorry, we'd be glad to provide them. But anyway, approval. Roll call, please, Ruth Ann.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Demmett?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Plaski?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
President Demmett, I'm sorry. President Hall?
Yes.
Couple of more months. Give me a couple of more months. I'll get it straight.
Do we have any commendations or recognitions for tonight?
No.
Okay. 8.0, public hearing. Do we have that? I didn't think so. I was thinking about finances, but that's later on. Communications, don't believe we have any of those. Administrative reports. None of those? All right, so we're starting straight in on 11.0, action items. And instead of this being consent, again, this is going to be by roll call. So I need approval for the minutes of the May 19th, 2020 business meeting and the minutes of the June 2nd, 2020 study session.
You can list them all. And you can list them all under consent.
Okay, great. That's wonderful. Thanks, John. I was hoping I didn't have to do all the way through 11.8. I can do that on?
Yes.
Okay, great. So that first item is the approval of minutes. Second item, 11.2, is the approval of bills and checks in this, in the following amounts. The education fund bills and the amount of 1.5, 1 million. Operations and maintenance fund bills to the amount of $250,000. Transportation fund bills and $40,000. Working cash bond, $60,000. The school facility occupational tax and $16,000. Port in the amount of $46,000. Payroll in the amount of 4.3 million. And the Urbana adult education in the amount of $110,000. 11.3, we'll need approval for the inter-fund loans requested to repay as many of the inter-fund loans as possible to the working cash fund prior to the end of the fiscal year, which happens in a few weeks on June 30th of this month. This year, sorry. Permanent transfer. We need approval to request transfer interest as of June 30th of this year, which is permanent transfer of funds, and the amount of transfers will be in the actual amounts of interstate earned through June 30th of this year. Interest earned in the working cash and bond and interest funds will be permanently transferred to the education fund, which the Board of Education deems to be the fund most in need of interest. Next up, 14, 11.4 is personnel items. And as we mentioned earlier, there was one resignation, was actually retirement, and that will seek approval for those personnel items. 11.5, the approval of June bills for payment. We're requesting in advance for the June bills to be payable, and the copies will be included with the August Board Agenda Meetings. I'm sorry, Agenda Materials. 11.6, resolution declaring the intent to retain interest earnings as interest and not to accumulate as principal. Carol, did you need to say anything about this beforehand? No, this is something that we've been doing regularly, right? So it's nothing.
It's a standard one we do every year.
Standard one. 11.7, this is the approval from Self-Made King's Request to give $3,300 financial support for their summer program for a group of gentlemen who organized themselves last year. So we talked about this at the last meeting, and we also heard all that, what they did last summer. So this is nothing new. And 11.8, our final item, is the renewal of the Arbor Food Service Contract, which is coming from Carol, which is who we contracted with starting last year for this year.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Do we have a second? Thank you. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please, Ruth Ann.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Demmett?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Plaski?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Hall?
Yes. Motion passes. 12.0, action items. These are individual. And the first up is 12.1, gifts. These are the following gifts we received from the Champaign-Urbana Elks Lodge, number 2497, $500 for food programs for the early childhood and elementary school students in our district. We received a gift from Illinois Public Media, WILL-TV and Radio, who donated 100 summer learning bags for the pre-kindergarten to kindergarten grades. The Principal Scholars Program donated 1,000 composition books and notebooks to be distributed to support for the needs of school supplies. And the following individuals donated a grand total of $2,185 to the Karen De Bush Trust Fund. Carrie Taylor, Sarah Vial, Brandy Clay, Julia David-Will, and Colin Booth, Robin Sow-Wechsler, Amanda Pond, the Correo family, Ingrid Malief, Jean and Ellen Amberg, Peggy Patton and Todd Kinney, Mary Casey Diana, Laura Lyon, Julia Guth, Albert Veloki, David Cooper, Liv Davila, Amy Johnson, the Ando family, and Sasha Rubel. We'd like to say thank you to all of those people. And also Diane Gottile donated $100 to the Josh Gottile Excellence in Music Awards. So we'd like to approve that and say thank you to everybody who donated.
Move acceptance of the gifts.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Ruth Ann, please. Roll call.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Demmett?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Plaski?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
President Hall?
Yes. Motion passes. 12.2, Press Plus Issue 103. This is approval for the rewritten and revised policies in the Press Plus 103 issue through the Illinois Association of School Boards, which Superintendent I've retained. He explained to us last meeting, and we've talked about it repeatedly. So do I have a motion to approve that rewriting, rewritten policies?
So moved.
That noise. I didn't hear a second.
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
All in, sorry. Roll call then, Ruth Ann.
Carter?
Yeah.
Member Demmett?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Plaski?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes. Motion passes. 12.3, this is renewal of our insurance policy. Carol, would you like to say anything about the renewal of our district's insurance coverage for 2021?
I don't believe so. I explained it in the memo. We did increase our building values to take account for the new buildings. We hadn't actually increased those up to this point. So that's part of the increase. Peggy had asked a question about whether or not our liability insurance would cover COVID claims from students or from staff. And I checked into that. It's interesting. It's so unclear right now because they don't really have a lot of claims coming in yet. There are some exclusions in the policy related to bacteria that we're not sure if that would come into play. So there's a possibility under our liability that it wouldn't be covered. But similar to when they had 9/11, there was a terrorism act that came out that the government, federal government basically required all insurers to cover terrorism if you had that policy. We're thinking that that's, there's going to be some type of government act that would have to come out that would require insurers to cover COVID claims as well. So it's really unclear, Peggy, so just wanted to let you know that. The Board, as far as any claims that would be against Board members, would be covered if any of Board members were covered or sued individually. But as far as the general liability policy for the district's kind of interesting, whether or not that would be covered because there's this bacteria exclusion, bacteria and fungi, that we're not quite sure how that would play into this. So still, still early, so we'll have to wait and see. But it's interesting to hear that. The exclusion for that is actually very common. All policies, general liability, general liability policies have, though it's not something that would be particular to or specific to Urbana. They just recommended that, you know, obviously you document your sanitation practices and follow those, and it would obviously be very hard to prove if somebody did have a claim that they actually contracted it at our district. That's all yet to be seen, too.
Thank you, Carol.
Do I have a motion to approve the renewal of our insurance? I'm sorry. No other questions. Sorry. Move?
So moved, Peggy.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please, Ruth Ann.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Demmett?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Plaski?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
President Hall?
Yes. Okay, thank you. 12.4, this is the tentative district budget for 2021, which I'm going to let Carol talk us through with the dates and all the relevant information, so.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer, if you want to share the tentative budget assumptions, I did provide those to the Board this afternoon. We'll start with that. Unfortunately, as similar to last year, oh, not that one, the assumptions one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There you go. I kind of highlighted the ones that I wanted to discuss that were really changes that I've made. Obviously, property taxes are going to be a big one this year, not because of any CPI or new construction, but just the fact that the county office is not processing the payments. And we're right now very low as far as the distributions that we've received so far. And we're not even sure if we're going to get another one before June 30th, which is really going to impact us, unfortunately. Or fortunately, cash flow-wise, we're still going to be okay. But it does greatly impact our budget and skews things. It's going to make FY '20 into year look a lot under budget. And then all of those receipts that we would have gotten in June are going to be pushed into next fiscal year. So next fiscal year is going to look like a huge surplus, more than likely. None of that is reflected in this budget because we don't know yet. I mean, it could be that they come through as of June with the payments. But right now, as of today, we are about at 38% compared to where we were last, in prior years, in a normal year. About 38% of where we would have received in June, so we're way under. If we don't receive any more tax payments before June, it would be at about 18%. And when I say a normal year, I'm going back two years and beyond because every year up until last year, it's always been we got about 50% before June 30th and about 50% after June 30th. It was always split half and half in our fiscal years. So these last two years have just been very, very different. And hopefully, we had thought last year that this wasn't going to happen again, and here we are. It's happening again. So I'm hoping they get things together here in the next couple of weeks. So that makes, that makes the budget look very, very different for that reason. So I wanted to point that out. Going down as far as number three, state evidence-based funding. Right now, we're looking at our funding remaining level for this year because of the Budget Implementation Bill that was passed. So that's great news. There will be no tier-two funding, though, like we have had in the past. But we were thankful that we were at least having, having level funding, so that was good. But I, as you probably heard, the state budget is basically depending on federal bailout money. So if for some reason that doesn't come through, they will be prorating our funding. But we're hoping that doesn't happen. If you go on down to number six. The next change is in replacement taxes. I was very conservative. I dropped our replacement taxes down to about half of what we normally get. That's about a $500,000 to $600,000 decrease. But again, not knowing what's going to happen with all the businesses that have lost revenue during this time, we're assuming that's probably going to take a hit. We're just not sure how much. So I dropped that by half. Down to number 11. The SROs, this is the first full year of the SROs. Last year was a partial year, and we had about 275,000 budgeted last year. And this year, it's going to be up to 321,300. That's the annual amount. That agreement with the city expires at the end of June 30, 2022. Number 12, just wanted to point out, even though we know we've been doing lots of planning for the fall and purchasing lots of, lots of masks and temperatures, I mean thermometers and all kinds of things to plan for the fall, we're hoping that the grants that we have, the CARES Grant, and we're going to write for a FEMA grant, that those will all be covering those so far as things become clear, as far as what the fall is going to look like and for transportation and whether we're going to be, you know, a blended program or completely onsite, that'll become hopefully more clear as, as we get into August. So the final budget will be a lot more accurate as far as reflecting those costs. But again, we're hoping the grants right now, that the CARES Grant will be able to pick up everything so far. This budget does not include any salary increases since we're still in negotiations. I did actually budget, the retirements are in here, of about 560,000. So that is taken into account. There's just no increases. The benefits are the same as last year again because insurance and EBA is also subject to negotiations, so those will probably change as well. As far as number 15, facility sales tax, again, I decreased that about 25%. Again, not knowing if students are going to be back, I mean, it's, it's really probably going to take a hit. We're just not sure how much. So I dropped that back 25%, again, just to be conservative. And the other thing that I forgot to add on here, but I wanted to mention, I did add in, I know the Board's talked a lot about our co-curricular, extracurricular line where we, when different groups come to the Board, like the music groups, to ask for help with their trips and things. You guys had talked about having an actual budget line that would be allocated a certain amount of money so that you could use that when, when the time came. So I don't know if you want to talk about that, but actually, I've put in 10,000 just to throw a number out there. If you want to change that, or if you think that's fine, I'll leave it as is, but, or I could take it out if you don't think we, it's a time to do that. But I wanted to make sure I brought that up because I know it's come up a couple of times this past year as groups came to the Board, so. So that was added in as well. So that's the assumptions. Any questions regarding the budget assumptions?
Okay, just ask you to repeat what you said about number six, the corporate PTAL. I missed how much you anticipate.
The corporate personal property replacement tax.
Yeah, not the, yeah, right, number six.
50%.
Right.
It's about, it's about 560, I think, 560,000?
560,000?
Reduction. So it's normally about 1.2, 1.12, I think. So it's, half of that's about 560,000. So that's a 560,000 decrease to our revenues.
And can you explain, I mean, I don't remember ever there being a decrease in that in the budget assumptions in the past. So can you just explain to me, because I'm slow on these things, how all of it is impacting that particular budget line?
Well, replacement taxes are based on, it's based on income for corporate corporations. So is, as corporations' income would go down, it's statewide. That's going to impact the amount of money we get for corporate personal, I can't even say it, CPPRT.
And are all school districts subject to that, or is it because we're under tax caps?
I mean, I, no, it's all school districts get that money.
Yeah. So all districts will, will be suffering in, in a similar manner?
Correct. It's the facility sales tax that only we would be seeing a reduction in that. Not all districts get that unless it's been voted in in their county. But no, replacement tax is something. As I've said, I've been watching lots of webinars on things that you need to be considering as far as budgeting, and that's a big one that they talk about, is that that's going to take a hit just because of the businesses that have, that have lost income because of the shutdown.
It's, it's not so big for Urbana because we don't have a large corporate presence. But school districts like in Decatur and Monticello, and Monticello because Illinois Power used to be there, those, those districts will have substantial budget problems because of this.
Do you, I just went back a few years in your budget assumption reports to us, Carol, but, and I didn't see any reduction ever. I mean, is this the first time in a long time?
I don't remember ever. I mean, it's gone down slightly, up and down as the economy does. But, you know, and if, as, as I keep looking, they, they usually come out with an estimate, too, and they haven't got that out there yet, a projection. So I will use that when I do my final budget. But right now, that's when I was going to the webinars, that's what people were saying. They were using about 50, you know, 50 to 75%. So I'm being pretty conservative.
When you say 560,000, is that a direct takeout of our budget? Or is that, I mean, is it a portion of that that comes directly out of our education fund? 560?
It's all, it's all out of the education fund. I usually always budget replacement tax all to the education fund. And so that 50% hit is going to all to be to the education fund.
And that's all ours. I mean, you're, that 560,000, you're not, that's not region-wide or anything. That's our direct.
It's all Urbana's. It's all Urbana's, Urbana School District, yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So yeah, lots of reductions here, but unusual year, so.
Has there been any conversation with the county clerk's office about what the expectation is regarding the money?
The taxes?
Yeah.
I know Jennifer's probably been on, because I've asked the question because we couldn't get through. So I asked the regional office because I know the regional superintendent will sometimes send out an email to all the districts in the county and find out if, if anybody's heard anything. And Jennifer, didn't you say that they actually went to several super? I think went to the county board meeting.
Went to the county board meeting to really stress how important it is for all districts to have that payment by June 30th and the impact on, you know, even if we get it July 1, it is a huge impact. You know, it sounds like a day and not a big deal, but in, in our fiscal world, it is really a big deal.
Yeah, it, I mean, it pushed us from recognition down to review last year on our financial profile. And I had to put an explanation in that the only reason this happened is because our cash on hand at June 30th had dropped so much, and it was because we didn't get our taxes in. You know, I've had to explain it so many, in so many different instances. We had a, we had a vendor who wasn't going to do business with us because we, our financial profile score dropped. And I'm like, wait a minute. We, we were in the same boat as several, you know, all the, all the districts in Champaign County. And he finally read our, just our explanation on the ISBE website and agreed. But it was, you know, it's just unfortunate that we have to, to answer to this and when it's not our fault.
Okay, thanks.
But yeah, I mean, we're hopeful that we get the money by June 30th. I think they, they understand how important it is, but who knows if it's going to happen. But I can tell you that from a cash flow standpoint, we're going to be okay. So we'll be able to make payroll and do everything, even if it's a couple of weeks late, we'll be fine. Okay, if no other questions on that, Jennifer, if you want to go to the summary page that you had up earlier, that one, yeah. So the expenses really, I think, only decreased by about $500,000 overall from last year. It's the revenues that are, that are taking a big hit because of those decreases I've talked about with replacement tax and, and potentially the taxes as well. In the final budget, it'll be a lot clearer, so I'm not too worried about a million and a half deficit in the Ed Fund. Looking back at past, past budgets we've done, we've had negatives deficits at this point for the tentative, and sometimes we have positives when we get the final one done. So I don't want to alarm anybody because, as I've said before, this is really, really tentative, and it's more tentative than, than most years just because of all the uncertainties that we have. I'm thinking that FY '20, the year that we're ending, is probably going to be under budget, of course. Not significantly, but we will be under budget, which is a good thing. The carryover fund balances that normally are shown on this, I will have on the final budget. But until we have the, the June 30 numbers, it would just be a guess as far as what that's going to look like right now, so I didn't include those. But about, if you recall, about eight and a half million dollars in taxes that were meant for FY '19 came into the current year because they were late last year. So if that happens again, we just keep moving. We keep deferring all these tax revenues into the following year. I'm hoping this isn't the new normal, but we're two years possibly doing it this way. So we may just have to count on this as the way it's going to be. I hope not. So anyway, very tentative. Just wanted to have something in front of you tonight so that we can operate for the next couple of months. But I can assure you, the budget we come back with in September will be much more accurate than this one, as it always says, so. I'm with the, appreciate the approval, or any questions, if you guys have any.
Any final questions?
I would, yeah, I wouldn't. I would like to, given, you know, all the uncertainty around the budget for 2021, it seems like what is clear is that we're going to have far, far fewer funds to support the district than we would have had had the pandemic not occurred. I mean, that's clear. In light of that and mindful of our strong commitment to our teachers and to support all levels of personnel in our district and to keep class sizes manageable, I ask that we reconsider the recent commitment to pay for two full-time SROs in the year ahead. Those $320,000 are sorely needed for our teachers, counselors, and social workers, who are the ones who are responsible for safe and effective learning environments. And, you know, it, it And, you know, in, in light of the contract that we have with the city, given the changes that have been brought on by COVID, including significant revenue losses to our district, and the likelihood that we'll have far fewer students in our schools for part, maybe most of next school year, as we consider hybrid approaches and/or ending the semester early, I would hope the city would permit us to terminate that contract. But I, I think three hundred and twenty thousand dollars is, is something we can't afford right now, and it's unclear that we need SROs in a building where we have far fewer students. I mean, you know, my position about having SROs at all, but especially at this time, it's hard, it's hard for me to justify to the public that we need the three hundred and twenty thousand dollars for two full-time SROs when we, we, we will not have the dollars we need for our basic teachers and other support staff. So I ask that we reconsider that in light of all of the above. And I can put that in the form of a motion, I understand you're wanting an approval of this tentative budget, I don't know, and what's the best way to to formalize that? But I know this is the time to, to take, to make that reconsideration. I mean, I don't think we can afford to pay the high police pension costs right now, I'm not saying they're not entitled to it, but we can't afford to pay that when we're going to struggle so much to pay for our, our teachers, mental health people, and social workers, who we depend on in our schools.
Um, I'm glad you brought that up, Peggy, because the thought had occurred to me too, about, about a discussion about that, I figured that at some point we, we might have to have a discussion about trimming costs, so, but this is brand-new territory for me, so John, anybody else step in, is there a, a procedure about this? That we could, that we could, I don't know, are you saying, suggesting that you wouldn't, that you want us to table the motion, Peggy, or?
Or, or, I mean, we have a discussion, I mean, I, I guess I'm putting that forward as a motion that I, I ask that our, our central office reconsider, pull back from our, our commitment to hiring two full-time SROs next year in light of our, our shortfall. Of course, that would need a second, and then we, I, I'd appreciate hearing from others about that.
That, this kind of motion wasn't even on the agenda, and the public has had no opportunity to even provide input on both sides of this, I'd be willing to put this on the, the, the agenda for a future meeting so that both sides can weigh in, the public has the opportunity to discuss this, it's, it's, it's of high importance to a lot of people. But just to do it without any, any sort of, of, of warning to the public, is kind of against what we, we've always had have done here in practice.
Well, we're voting on a tentative budget, I guess it seemed like the logical time to bring this up, I mean, we're, you know, we're not coming back on the tentative budget, and this is our last meeting until, until August.
So I would suggest that the tentative budget is, Carol's made it clear tonight, the tentative budget is not just tentative, tentative, tentative. And the premise under which you made your motion that funds would not be available, and it was clear that there'd be fewer funds, I, I'm not sure that that will be the case. And, so I, I would further have some concerns that, that that discussion be part of more information is available regarding our budget altogether. But, having not been prepared to discuss this tonight, I'm not prepared to offer a second, and if somebody does second it and becomes a motion, I would I would agree with Paul, that that particular motion is not on our agenda. And so, we might have some significant issues with the Open Meetings Act, I, I know we've had input in the last two or three days, a lot on one side. But this was a hard fought, and a controversial issue when we addressed it the first time, and there were individuals in the community absolutely on both sides of the question. And, so I'd be, I'd be uncomfortable in moving forward with anything regarding this in, in the form of some kind of hardcore motion. I think maybe a more proper approach might be to say that we would like for this discussion to be on the agenda, when, at the time that we're considering the full budget, so that there's community awareness. If there's board, if there's, if there's even board energy to revisit the issue. So since we're not, we don't have a second, there may not be board energy to revisit the issue, since we just so recently decided this.
I certainly understand all that, of, of course, right now, it's a very different point in history than it was last December, or last fall when we discussed this. And I guess, you know, I, I usually the tentative budget we make, we kind of pass as it is, but since this is such an unusual year, and I, I don't know how you can I, I mean, I thought I heard you say, John, that it's not clear whether we're going to have a shortfall or not, I mean, all of the major line items Carol just outlined indicated significant shortfalls, and that's if the state gets the money from the feds. I mean, that's even assuming some, some positive things, even with all of that, we're going to have significant shortfalls. So this seemed like the time to, to make some statements about the tentative budget, because we are in a very different place than we were last fall. I mean, you know, we are looking at a very different time, I am fine with waiting till August, but I guess, I wasn't sure with the tentative budget, how much central administration wanted from us, I mean, we just simply rubber stamp it, which I have always done in the past because it was so tentative, but this year being as different as it is, and we know we're going to have significant revenue shortfalls, it is a given, it's not a, it's not an if, it's a for sure. And that we're going to have far fewer students in our schools. The obvious budget item that seemed to be just glaring out at us on the pieces that Carol just shared was the approval of two SROs at a high cost to us, to be in a building where we're not going to even have many students at a time when we're going to have significant budget shortfall. So that's why I brought it up now, because we had, we were asked to approve a tentative budget based on that assumption. And I thought the central office might want to hear from us about whether we are we're good about these tentative assumptions, and I, I am not good about that particular assumption. And thought others might have similar feelings to share, maybe it's not a time, you know, it may be the first of a couple of discussions, I, I get that with August, but it seems to me a good time to let our administrators know how we feel about the basic assumptions Carol just shared with us.
Well, it's not so clear to me that that's the obvious reduction. If we have to go about the business of budget reductions, I much prefer a comprehensive approach where we look at the entire school budget. And, and indeed, that may end up being the, you know, one of the items that comes to the top for cutting. I, I'm not saying that, I'm just indicating that the board's on record as approving that budget, and and, and I know things change over time, but I just prefer to look at it in a more comprehensive approach. That is my opinion, I'm one of seven.
Did we discuss, did we start this discussion without a motion on the floor?
We, we did not have a motion.
We were talking to Carol about it, didn't we?
Well, Peggy put a motion on the floor, which does not yet have a second.
But when we went straight to twelve point, where are we at, twelve point four? We, we, we started off by saying what twelve point four was, we didn't make a motion, and then go to Carol for discussion, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, alright. So Peggy has now actually made a motion. Correct, Peggy?
Which
Right.
I believe, Peggy, can I interpret your motion to be that I approve the tentative budget with the exception of assumption number, whatever that assumption is that regards SRO?
Number eleven, yeah.
Eleven.
Yes. That's an accurate statement, John.
Anybody have a second for that? If we don't have a second for that particular motion, does that mean that we cannot discuss it at all in August?
The motion dies.
Motion just, yeah.
Does not mean that we can't ask after, I would make a motion then to approve the tentative budget.
I'll second that.
Moved in second, and roll call, Ruthanne?
Member Carter?
She's muted.
Yes.
Member Demmett?
Yes.
Member Patton?
No.
Member Plasky?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes, Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Hall?
I think I'm going to have to vote no, because I do agree that I would like to talk about, I would like to talk about this in August, but I still, you still have the votes to pass it, so. Motion passes.
And, and The issue of discussing SROs could be, we can, at the same time here, as a group, ask our administrators to, if there is desire amongst the majority of the board, to have this as an agenda discussion item in August, we can now give that type of instruction to, we just can't take action on it, folks.
Alright, well, I, I'm willing to amend mine to a yes then, but I, I very strongly want to agree that I, I do want, and I'm not just targeting this one particular item on the, on the, I mean, everything has to be looked at carefully because so much can happen between now and August, and I just want us to be realistic, so I will change my vote to a yes, but with the understanding that that discussion will be on the agenda in August.
And which meeting? The second meeting of the, of the month?
Well, I guess, can I, can I clarify something, John, so right now I'm only hearing from two people that we want to do this, so.
And, any, any member can add an item to the agenda though, especially the board president, if Ann wants it on there, it's on there.
So would this be at the meeting when Carol does her budget, which is not usually in August, it's in early September?
I think it's probably makes sense to do it in August, I'm losing the piece of paper that had the, the dates on it, but, um,
September is my study session, the study session in September is when I present it, and then it's approved at the business meeting in September.
So that would be September first.
I guess, I guess September first would be fine, I mean, actually with that many extra weeks in there, that just gives us more time for clarity on where our funding's going to come from. So I'd be happy to put that on the agenda for September first, before we take a vote on the fifteenth. Yes, I'll change my vote to a yes then.
The other big item that's missing is, of course, is all the, anything that might come from the bargaining process. So this is a very, very tentative budget, and we really need to let processes undergo, so get underway before we make any drastic changes to our budget.
Okay, and I, I do want to make clear that I'm not doubting in any way Carol's ability at reducing our budgets and everything, I, I have full confidence that we're all working hard to make sure that we can stay within budget, and that we're giving everything the due diligence it needs, but I, I do want to revisit the discussion, so just want to make that clear. Okay, so, did we get the motion through, did we take the roll call and everything's good, okay? That was twelve point four. Twelve point five, sorry, I saw the dates right after I spoke, twelve point five is the tentative Urbana Adult Education Budget for twenty twenty twenty-one. And the budget, I think we have the numbers somewhere in here, but do we have any discussion?
I'm of approval.
Okay, motion, do we have a second?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, roll call please.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Demmett?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Plasky?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes, Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Hall?
Yes, motion passes. Twelve point six, the board meeting schedule for the upcoming school year, you have the meeting dates and times, usual times, I don't think there's any discussion about that, is there, did we want to, we're sticking to seven thirty start time?
Well, I guess I wanted to discuss, but we usually change the March dates. So I don't, I'm, because that first date usually will fall between, in spring break. So typically, we move that second meeting up, so I just wanted to talk to you guys about that, if that's something we're wanting to do again. That would move the March sixteenth meeting to March ninth, if we do them back to back.
And I want to add that oftentimes that first study session in August, particularly since it comes so early in the month, is sometimes moved to the second Tuesday, because
Oh, yes.
A lot of people are not in town that early in this community.
Yes, that's right, John, I forgot about that one.
So that would move it to August eleventh, if my math is right, is that correct?
And usually, usually the administration wants that, so you're better prepared for opening of school.
I mean, I know that we've always done that, but I mean, I'm just wondering, this year, is anyone going anywhere?
Well, this year we didn't do it because we had so many hirings, so this year we did have our August meeting in the first week of August, so we didn't change it for this year.
Right. So, so August fourth, you're saying August, I mean, I'm just thinking, people aren't leaving town the way they usually do in the past, so maybe having it on the first and the third, instead of putting two back-to-back. It's fine with me this year, in the past, it hasn't been, but this year it's fine, so I'm
It's fine with you to keep it on the fourth?
Yeah.
I guess I wasn't suggesting it, just because I know with remote learning and not knowing what changes we might be encountering, the eleventh is really late. If we needed to have some discussion with you guys about what we're doing for remote learning, I think having that August fourth day would be helpful for us this year to be able to update the public, update you, if there are things that we're still on, unsure about, that gives us at least, you know, a couple of weeks before the opening day is August seventeenth. If we, if we push it to the eleventh, then we just have a few days to make any changes that we might need to change. So that's why that one was not on my radar, but I'm, I'm glad you brought it up, John.
Well, I won't be there on the fourth.
Oh, you're going to be gone?
Are you going to be gone?
And I think, in all honesty, as states open up, families are taking vacations while they can, because they weren't able to take a spring break vacation. So, but, but if I'm the only one, y'all meet.
What are everybody else's thoughts? I, I guess we, we can go either way, I mean, we can update you via mail and things like that, I often send you information that way too, if we have to.
I'm in agreement of keeping it the August fourth.
Anybody else going to be gone?
I'm around.
I don't know yet, but so.
Okay. I'm, I'll be here, so I, I don't know, do you mind missing out on it, both of you, John and Paul, if you have to?
I'll be here.
No, that's fine.
The one thing I would like to say about our meetings, I know John has talked about this in the past, I would really like to have some kind of cutoff time. I know we have a lot of work to do, but sometimes when the meeting seems to linger, it's very hard to stay focused. And I don't know if I'm just speaking for myself or not, but I know we've had a lot of late meetings. I know at one point John talked about how, I believe it was either the county or the city have like a special time set, and if the work isn't done, then they'll take it up later, you know? So I don't know what people think about that, maybe John can give some more insight on what he was saying, if he remembers at that time, you know?
It's the city council that has a, a stop time, and then you have to pass a motion to either extend, or they reconvene the following day, which is legal under Open Meetings Act, is if you need to recess the meeting because of the lateness of the night, you can start the next day.
Well, Brenda, I Thank you for clarifying.
Brenda, I was actually going to bring that up, the seven thirty start time, I know every year, every year we talk about it. So I, I know, I just wanted to kind of get a sense from everybody if you wanted to stay with the seven thirty time, I think what Brenda's saying is, you know, when we start at seven thirty, and we go till nine thirty or ten o'clock, it feels like it's really, really late, but we really didn't really start till seven thirty, so we started a little earlier, like six thirty or seven.
Well, that's, for me, that's difficult.
Okay, I just wanted to bring it up, so.
Even seven, would seven be difficult? Because I, I, I'm aware, when we, when the meetings go late, we just aren't operating well, we don't, I don't think we discuss very well and all that, so I, I was
Thank you, I, I agree.
Seven, it would at least shave that half hour off, but is seven too early for, for others?
Well, to me, it's the length of time of the meeting, not opposed to when it starts and when it ends. But after the meeting goes for more than about two and a half hours, it, it, it generally, I agree with, with Brenda. You know, people phase out, but, and the reason we've always started at seven thirty is because it's family But, and the reason we've always started at 7:30 is because it's family-friendly, so that, um, board members can have dinner with their families. Um, we're at a point in time where, um, Paul has kids at home. Um, and Tori, yours is going away to college. I'm, I'm not, Paul may be the only, kind, not good to say, but Paul may be the only board member with children.
Tori, Tori still does.
I have a, I have a rising sophomore.
Oh, okay, sorry.
But I also would be okay with a 7 o'clock time, so.
The, the, the trick for me is, is if I want to catch a middle school concert, you know, it, they, they typically start at 7, so I can, I can kind of catch some of it. I hate missing, seeing my kids do things in the schools because of these meetings. I'll, 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 I'll come earlier if, if, if need be, but that's my biggest challenge, so.
One of the things, this is Brenda, one of the things that I think that, uh, we have done several times in the past is when we do have the students come in, we need to be very time-conscious about their presentations and where they're at in our meeting, depending on if we have a lot of, um, other activities or a lot of other, um, plans that we're hearing from, you know, other staff members and stuff. Because oftentimes, I know, like during the art week, we have to have all the students come up first. When, uh, they come in and talk about their trip to Tetwyl, Mississippi, they have to go first because usually they need to get back home and get studying.
Exactly.
I would be in favor of 7 o'clock. Or even 7:15.
Well, some discussions are very time-sensitive that we have to have, um, you know, things like approving budgets and whatnot, and is there any way you can try to reach a happy medium by saying that we'll, we'll try and spread out some things better? I mean, I know that's not really easy in, in some cases, but other cases, if it's a presentation of, um, student achievement or something, if we, if we see the agenda's looking heavy, we could perhaps postpone it to a different meeting. I'm, I'm trying to brainstorm ideas of how we can avoid being there too late. Because I, I agree with Paul. I know, I mean, my kids aren't there anymore at the district, but there's plenty of people who are going to sporting events and concerts and things like that, or practices with their own kids are just finishing up and they're getting them off and ready, so, and that, that doesn't just go for board members, it goes for family members and other teachers and people who want to be a part of our meeting, so I'm, I'm a little hesitant to start it early just because I don't want to not allow other people to come. That would be my opinion about it, but I'm just one person, so I'm okay with 7:30.
We've also brought up the fact of what we possibly might be able to do for public participation. And if we need to cut off taking in those golden rod sheets at a certain point, once the beginning of the meeting starts. That might be something that we need to address again. Everyone needs to be heard. It's lovely for them all to come and talk to us personally during public participation. There are nights when we have a lot of that. We do our best to stick to our five-minute rule. And sometimes that doesn't work. And I think there have been times when we have gone long enough with, with just the public participation, that we've taken a recess after that. Uh, one reason, uh, it's sort of to have the time to clear the room so that there's not so much noise as people are leaving. And so we can just have a break, refresh ourselves for a minute, and then follow the rest of our agenda. So that's possibly something that we need to figure out a little bit of some type of a tweaking where, and if we should at a certain time, once the gavel's dropped to begin the meeting, that we have a time limit to accept uh, the golden rod sheets for participation.
If we did something like that, I would like. If we did something like that, I'd like to see this happen at like a formal discussion and an actual item about amending policy.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I, I really, I wouldn't feel comfortable turning people away. I mean, no one knows that they're coming and they're gonna be 1 of 50. They're coming because they've got something, you know, that, that's really important to them. And to say, sorry, you picked the night when there's 40 others there and we're gonna cut it off at 35, I mean, I, I sort of feel like that's our main role is to hear the public, so I, I, I'm good with the five-minute cutoff, and I know sometimes we're a little flexible about that. Hard-nosed about the five minutes, but I would be really uncomfortable turning people away when that's what we're all about.
Exactly. We, it's, it's come up before in the past.
Yeah. We'd also have to check with OMA regulations about allowing people to speak or not to speak. That's a, that's a big one. I mean, they, cutting people off at five minutes is fine, but saying no, you can't speak after certain other people have already spoken, I think, I feel that's a violation.
OMA allows you to establish a, uh, maximum length of time.
Yeah, so we can set a time and say, we're gonna allow 30 minutes, or, you know, and cut it off at that point, yes.
If, if the board chooses to, I'm not necessarily promoting that.
I, I think, I, I agree with Paul. I think that that's another thing that we could talk about, if we wanted to craft any, any way to do that, that, that's fine for a later date, but I'm, I'm, I don't think that we should vote on thing, well, anyway, do we have other opinions? Did we get everybody's opinion about this?
I would move to, uh, accept the proposed meeting schedule with a meeting start time of 7:30.
Oh, wait, wait, we didn't talk about March.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, sorry, Paul. So is, is it the board's preference to move the March 16th before, um, have two back-to-back meetings in March, or move after spring break? Would, would, would we prefer to do the 2nd and the 9th?
Yeah, that's what we've done the last few years. That's fine with me.
Okay, that worked really well for us this year. And, um, and allowed us to get in all of those, uh, reduction in force. I mean, it, it pushed us to meet that deadline, that 45-day before the end of the year deadline, but we were able to do that, and it worked really well, so. If everyone else is okay with that, we would save March 2nd and March 9th. Okay, sorry, Paul.
No. Uh, repeat the motion with March 2nd and March 9th on, on, on the meeting schedule.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, roll call please. You're muted, Ruthann.
Yes.
Ruthann.
Yeah, Ruthann, you're muted. Oh, I mean, I can unmute her.
Hold on, no. It happened a while ago when I lost connection, and then it came back on and it was muted. I didn't hear any of that. For the second time, sitting here in central office, I've lost connection, and I don't know why. So I missed everything about the March thing and what we were possibly.
Oh, so, so, sorry, Ruthann, uh, Jennifer asked the board's, uh, preference as to whether or not to have, uh, the, the two March meetings, the first and second week, or the first and fourth week, and we all expressed first and second, and I made the motion to accept the meeting schedule with March 2nd and March 9th as our, uh, March 2021 meetings with a start time of 7:30, and John seconded.
Okay, okay. I, I was in the middle of pulling up an actual calendar for next year because I wanted to know how many Tuesdays we had in the month, and that is a five-Tuesday month, which, um, pushes out getting to our first meeting in April a little bit. Though I didn't know if, yeah. Because it's the 14th through the 20th for spring break, then. That's why we're moving the one that's on the 16th.
Yes.
We would have an option of doing the 23rd as a Tuesday because then we'd have a 30th would be, you know, the 5th Tuesday, and then we'd have April 6th. I would, I was look, I was just looking to see if we move it to the 9th, how many weeks we need to go until our next meeting. And so I'm, I'm not really saying anything one way or the other. It's food for thought for a moment.
Would that still give you time to bring the RIF, uh, list to the board?
I'm counting the days. It would be really tight. I'm in the third week of March, and I'm hitting 40, so, um, yes, I think we would be able to get it in. Kim, what is, I have to see what the last day. Okay, May 26th is the last day of school for 2021, so I think we would just make it. If I go back and count all student attendance days.
Well, I hate to drive our schedule over that particular item.
Yeah, that was one of the things she brought up, Ruthann, is that that would give that, the administration adequate time to bring the RIF list to the board in a public meeting.
And they brought, we've had special meetings before for, you know.
We have.
I'm more concerned about if we had a study session topic on the first Tuesday, is there enough time for administration to analyze whatever input we provide on that first Tuesday and have something ready to go on Friday, just three days later, uh, for the business meeting, or whether we're gonna be pushing, uh, things that might be discussed at the study session. We might be pushing them off until, until. I think that's what Ruthann's trying to, to address, is that sometimes when you have a business meeting right the next Tuesday, that just gives the administration two or three days to respond to any input that we have at the study session before bringing something back for final vote. If it is, if it is a 5th Tuesday month, um,
It makes for a long month.
The objection of going to the 4th is that then administrators have to work over spring break to be, and send stuff out on the Friday of spring break, uh, to meet our agenda items. But if we have a 5th Tuesday, we could go to a 5th Tuesday. Which would prevent that, that conflict of, um, forcing people to work over spring break.
And then, and then we'd have back-to-back meetings again because then we'd be meeting on April 6th.
Yeah, but at least one of them's a study session and, and, uh, not the administration trying to react to any input that the board might provide during the study session.
Okay.
I, just an idea.
I'm amenable either, either way. It's just, it's, we're having back-to-back meetings one way or the other.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I agree.
You could have it on the 20th.
If we have it on the 23rd, though, if we had it on the 23rd, though, then, then Lori has to work during spring break.
Oh, uh, what, well, the week before that, the 7th through the 13th, you're still working. You're off the 14th through the 20th for spring break. There's still an extra weekend there.
No, but, but what we're saying is to get the agenda published for the meeting on the 23rd, it would have to be done on the Friday of spring break, when the stat, when the office is closed.
True.
Well, for that reason, I wouldn't want to be in favor of anybody in central office having to come in specially, just, just to get the agenda done. I mean, I'm, I'm, I actually, I don't mind either way. For me, as a board member, showing up on either date, but I don't want to create work for anybody else.
So Jennifer, what do you prefer?
Well, I think it is, and, and I appreciate you guys considering Lori, but there are a lot of other people that, you know, we have personnel items that go on the agenda, and if they're business items, people in Carol's department are gathering those things, so there would be quite a few people working through, through spring break. Um, to get that meeting noticed and all the documents to you guys in time, so. So I guess our preference would be to do the back-to-back, and I'd like to have a little, the cushion of, um, for the RIF information, too, to have, you know, I know we can have a special meeting, but if we don't have to have a special meeting, it's always nice. We can get it done and not have to do that to you guys.
Okay, well, Paul, did your motion get a second?
Uh, it was you, it was you, John.
I seconded.
Okay, moved in second, and roll call please, Ruthann.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Demmett?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Plasky?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
President Hall?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay. March 9th and 7:30. Just want to make sure I got that right, correct? Yes, that is correct. Okay, next up, 12.7, the Wiley Heating Coil Replacement. Um, this is for accepting a bid to replace the heating coil at Wiley School, um, awarded to Mechanical Incorporated in the amount of $25,930. Do we need a discussion for this before we take a motion? I, I just have a general question. I, I, I know we, we often, you know, vote on these bids, and I always appreciate seeing what the various bids are, and we always go with the lowest bid. More typically, the bids are closer together. This one, what impressed me is that the, the range of bids was so far apart, you know, 25,000 to 85,000, and I, I, I guess I just wanted some assurance that I, I know we have to go with the lowest bid, but that, that we, we are also sure that we're going the lowest bid who will do the most, will do at least satisfactory work. Because the range is so great, um, you know, how, how do we, what, what kind of assurance do we have that the lowest bid is also gonna do at least satisfactory work? Do we know that, Randy?
We don't. No, um, I think the biggest reason is that not all the companies that bid actually came in and saw the work that was to be done. And over the past few years, we've actually changed out quite a few of the coils that have burst over the winter. Um, or just started leaking just in the seam or something, so, um, I would guess that the $84,000 bid, uh, didn't even come in to look at the work, uh, as well. Probably a couple others, um. I don't want to say that it happens a lot, but sometimes if a company doesn't really want the bid, they might just throw a number out there just to keep their name in the loop, sort of. But I, I'm, I'm pretty sure, as well as, uh, IGW, I think they're thinking the same thing, that, um, yeah, they'll be fine. Mechanical will be fine.
Thank you. That's helpful to know. I just wanted a little assurance. Any other questions? Oh, sorry.
Move the administrative, uh, recommendations.
Second? Second and roll call please. Member Carter?
Yes.
Member, Member Demmett?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Plasky?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Hall?
Yes. Motion passes, uh, and the same for 12.8. We are going to replace the boiler, um, for Liel and Martin Luther King. Um, the, for the lowest bid coming in, uh, to Mechanical Incorporated again in the amount of $347, $630. Do we have any discussion for that? Nope. Okay, no questions for Randy. Seeing none, uh, do I have a motion?
I move acceptance of that.
Seconded.
Moved in second, and roll call again, please, Ruthann.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Demmett?
Yes.
Member Patton? Yes. Member Plasky?
Yes.
Fisher votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
President Hall?
Yes, motion passes. 12.9, the last item on our, uh, action items for this evening, uh, is about the superintendent evaluation. Um, and this is something that Peggy and I worked on last year, um, but I, are we discussed last, started discussing it last year, but I'm gonna let Peggy take it away, if you want to explain what's, what all the paperwork is, please. Sure, thank you. And I think Jennifer's gonna put up the one piece that, um, actually is the item that we're gonna be voting on today, which is the timeline. Um, the other two pieces or three pieces that you had with your documents were just shared kind of for your review and reminder. The other pieces are the actual evaluation instruments, the climate survey, and then the evaluation instrument, which Jennifer fills out and board members fill out. Those are unchanged from the ones we used in 2018, when we did a lot of review and input. So those are unchanged. They simply were included just for your reminder, because it has been, um, since, uh, September 2018, the last one. What Ann and I are asking for is your, um, approval of the timeline, so I will, it's on the screen here, I'm just gonna walk through that, just to remind you how this all works. Um, today's the day we're asking for the approval of the timeline. Tomorrow, um, the superintendent, Jennifer, would receive a written evaluation form, the one that you had in your, within your documents, um, to provide her evidence about the 10 standards that are included in that evaluation instrument. And those were the standards of, um, professional practice that many superintendents used when we, we looked, when we reviewed copies of other evaluation forms sent by Patrick Rice back in the summer of 2018, just as a reminder. So tomorrow, Jennifer would receive her copy of the written evaluation form to provide her evidence about those 10 standards. And she would send her response to the full board, to each of us, by July third. Um, also tomorrow, each of Jennifer's direct reports would be sent uh the climate survey um in district or U S postal mail. And those responses will also be requested by July third, and those will come back to me at my home address. Included with the climate survey will be a an addressed stamped envelope to my home, so that they will be instructed to send those by July third to me. I will share those responses with Ann. And then on or around July tenth, we will share a summary of the superintendent direct reports survey results without the names, just as we did last time, with the entire board. Then on or around July fifteenth, each of you, each of us, members of the board, will receive the written evaluation form um along with a separate score sheet and will be asked to complete that form incorporating input from Jennifer's evidence that about the ten standards, because remember, she's going to send that, her response to us by July third. We'll take her input, we'll take the input from the climate surveys and then and fill out the ten standards, provide our feedback about how well Jennifer's meeting those ten standards with that, the benefit of that input. And we'll ask for the board's response to me by July twenty-second. Then Ann and I will put together the our collective written evaluation responses and send them back to you during the week of July twenty-ninth and August fifth, so that you can see what each of us said. And then if all goes well, we would set up a uh meeting with Jennifer, hold our performance evaluation with Jennifer during the week of August fifth to twelfth. And all of these dates are, may shift slightly, you know, based on schedules and response completion rates, just based on the last time we did it. Things sometimes shift by a few days because people are out of town and they haven't gotten it back and various things, but um we we actually kept pretty close to that schedule last time, so I'm 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 hopeful this year. So that's the timeline and that's that's what Ann and I are asking for your approval for tonight is it following proposed timeline. Are there?
Thank you.
About that?
This looks great to me. I really want to thank you for uh, you know, holding our feet to the fire, making sure this gets done. I I think it it worked out well last time in terms of our ability to use a new instrument and um I'm glad we're sticking with it for a second time. So um, yeah, yeah, I'm all for this.
Thanks.
I agree.
I agree as well.
Agree.
Uh, then I move to approve this timeline for the superintendent evaluation.
Second.
I second that.
Moved in seconded, uh, roll call, please.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Demmett?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Pulaski?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Hall?
Yeah, yes. Motion passes, and I I can't believe it's been a full year already, but it kind of, sometimes, some days it probably feels like ten years that have passed by with everything that's happened this past year, but it's already been a year since you've been with us, so I'm really happy to move forward with this. Okay, well, that's it for our action items. Um, is the next call for our future special executive meeting is supposed to be for July seventh, but Jennifer, you might have to update us on that. Is that date still standing?
Yes, so I know Lori sent an email around today and I think she heard from everyone except maybe Tori and Brenda. Is that right still? Um, we just found out on Sunday that July seventh is the day that Bryson has to report to school and he has to be there on the seventh at one. So I really want to be able to go with him. Um, I checked with Riley. When we landed on the seventh initially, we proposed two dates, the seventh and the fourteenth. Um, when we polled you guys way back in April, um, you know, I think at that time Riley said either date would work. Um, Peggy at that time wasn't available, but now she is. Riley actually says the fourteenth would actually be better. Um, this is the special meeting where we're going to see the Thomas Paine Concept. Um, and he said he could actually use that act, extra week, actually. So um, I think Paul was a maybe, but um Tori and Brenda, are you, do you guys think you'll be around July fourteenth? If we move that meeting from the seventh to the fourteenth? Yes, I will be. Okay. Tori, I didn't, I didn't hear you, Tori.
I'm fine for the fourteenth.
Okay. Okay, so I think we'll change that to reflect that the special meeting will actually be July fourteenth. Then Paul will let us know as soon as you can, if you can.
Yeah, we're we're planning a a trip to Michigan at some point in July. We just don't know when yet.
Okay, okay. And right now we have that at six thirty, and and the plan is really to have it remain. Um, you know, we don't want to load, July is supposed to be your month off, so we don't want to add a whole lot of other board business. We really just want to keep it to the Thomas Paine Concept. Um, and that be, you know, that be the main focus for the meeting. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report. I'm going to leave it with you, Jennifer.
All right, so um, I know Ann already read a public comment. Um, I received uh several emails this week, so I just wanted to um, in talking to our administrators and and several people here at Central Office, I just wanted to read a statement. Um, I'm not going to discuss it. I'll just read it, and then I have a couple other, one other item to discuss with you guys. Um, I have received several recent emails voicing concerns with our current SRO model and the and the desire to prioritize these allocated budget funds toward more mental health providers in our schools. I echo your sentiments. I echo those sentiments here we've heard tonight from the board as as well as some of our community members that we need more mental health supports. This has been and will continue to be a priority of our board and administration. We've already included requests to hire additional mental health professionals for our schools through the CARES federal funding that we we receive specifically for the elementary level. We hope to be posting and hiring for those positions very soon. In addition, during the last three years, we've discussed it at the board level, um, the board has added over one point two million dollars, and that's just salaries in licensed staff to support social emotional learning needs across the district. This has been and will continue to be a priority for administration and from what I've heard several times, a priority for the board. My team here at Central Office and the administrative teams at both the middle school and high school look forward to the opportunity to continue the teamwork started these last few months with our SROs in order to model effective, positive relationships with the police. Over the next two years of our agreement, we're committed to staying the course and providing training and professional development in our MTS as multi-tiered system of support, restorative practices, SCL strategies and trauma sensitivities to grow, to help grow the capacity of our SROs and more than just their role as a law enforcement officer. Remember, we agreed to to review this agreement after the first year, um, and that's something that we will definitely um continue and plan to do, that after next year, we will be looking at our agreement and making sure that we're moving in the right direction with our model. It is going to take a communal effort to assist with the task of providing the education, support, safety and empowerment of our students. We recognize that education does not reside solely within buildings and that the goal of education must extend beyond the walls and to the hearts and minds of individuals to affect change. As we work to educate and support the individuals within our school system on the importance of building positive relationships, seeing our students as precious entities who must be valued and cared for while maintaining a safe and structured environment, then we can begin to ensure effective outcomes. Upholding and imparting our most dearest values to all stakeholders, including SROs, is paramount in building these additional outcomes. Our approach in having SROs on our campuses is not to be tactical or punitive, but instead relational. So the relationships fostered with our SROs in school will extend beyond the classroom and out into the community. SROs are an integral part of our school support teams, and as a team, we will do our very best to make sure all USD one-one-six students feel safe and valued. And the next item I wanted to talk to you guys about is Derek Peterson, John. We haven't talked about him in a while.
No, we haven't.
So um Derek was supposed to come back to us um and when he traveled again to Indiana, you guys remember Derek, he he was here to talk about our student advocacy for the board. And of, and then COVID hit and he was unable to come. Um, so we've reached out to him again um and and trying to get on his calendar and his schedule, so I just didn't want you guys to leave knowing this is our last meeting for a while. Um, so Lori and I have been in contact with him. He's more than happy to come back. Um, he, I thought the best approach, stay away from that July meeting, but um have him come back to one of our early August meetings, maybe on the fourth. Um, and then we, go ahead, John.
Please, please not.
Oh, that's right, you're not here on the fourth. Um, so we'll have him come on the eighteenth, even if we, even if we have him come early and um you know, we're really planning for some kind of hybrid where we will have students in in face, you know, in person um at the building, so hopefully, even if we're able to um, you know, have a student join us, September, October even, would be, you know, ideal. So Derek's willing to come back. Um, Carol has kept that in the budget um to continue to um pay for that. As long as that, if that, as long as that's something you guys are still willing and want us to explore. I know it didn't happen at the end of the year, which was our plan. The spring was to have him come back and then we would finalize that with a Southmore junior or whatever, you know, we decide to do. Um, we would have been able to do that at the end of, you know, probably at this meeting or um, you know, maybe at the end of our May meeting, but we weren't, that didn't happen, so now plan B is to bring him back in August and um pick up where we left off, if that is okay with everybody here.
Yeah, there's many members of the class of two thousand and twenty that are disappointed that.
I know.
One of the things that class of two thousand and twenty wanted to get accomplished was uh student representation on the board, and I know that they're pretty disappointed about it. But I'm so happy to see that we haven't dropped the ball. One of the things that I think is essential is that um now that the high school administration has a you know, the new administration's been here a little bit, is that um we identify not a principal, not an assistant principal, but we identify somebody on faculty who's willing to be the the champion of this, who can then begin to forge a partnership uh with Derek Peterson. And uh, and make sure that somebody's working on this in between visits from Derek. Uh, I think that's the only way we're going to actually get this ball moving down the field. And uh, to remind the board, this is all about having more formal student representation uh at the secondary level uh at our board meetings and and with our board business, and uh I think we just need somebody to champion that, whether it be the Student Senate Advisor or be somebody else. Derek would advise us not to use the government. He would advise us to use something that's less formal. And uh, different in that the Student Senate leaders are already burdened with a lot of activities at the school and if you recall, his word to us is not primary leaders of the of the school, primary student leaders, but the secondary level, the primary leaders have their plates full. So I'm so glad to see that this is being brought back up and and isn't being uh forgotten.
Yeah, I know, um, again, with COVID happening, we weren't able to bring him back, which was disappointing, but he's really happy to come back, so we'll really work with his schedule to get him here. And if August doesn't work, then we'll push for early September, as soon as early as we can in the school year to get him here and pick that back up. Okay. Uh, oh, yes. John Kraft, Edward County Watch Dogs Incorporated, copy of all emails sent by any employee or employees of the district, U M S, USC one-one-six in the past ten days, which include the words protest or George or Floyd or police or Minneapolis or any combination of the above. This one include all emails sent by district social workers. And that has been fulfilled. Okay, that's it for me.
Okay, board reports. Does anybody have a board report they'd like to present? Nope. It's not, just, everybody's been hunkering down.
I just, yeah, I just want another shout out to the class of two thousand and twenty. I hear more and more and more about where these kids are going to school and what they've accomplished, and we have two Division One basketball athletes. We have another Division One cross-country runner that have been recruited. This has been a fantastic year for U H S and uh for the district, and uh we just, we we, we need to come up with ways to let the wider community know um how outstanding this class has been. All classes are outstanding, but this one just seems to be another cut above, and then if they can be an example for uh following classes, uh boy, we need to, we need to do that. And the great thing about it is that the success uh that is being shown in our district is is not, is multiracial. It is, all aspects of the student body have um, all all portions of the demographics of the student body have um, have just done amazing things this year. Um, and these kids got shorted on prom, they got shorted on graduation, and it shorted on other stuff, and I don't want to see them shorted on getting the recognition that they so so richly deserve.
Very true, John.
And that brings up any, any new word about the potential in-person commencement celebration in July?
Well, we've not heard anything from State Farm Center yet, so we're still holding July twenty-fifth. We have um, you know, every now and then Dr. Berenson or I receive an email from somebody saying we're not going to be here, you know. So we are hearing more from students that, you know, we're thinking there are a few that are not going to be able to participate. Um, you know, plans change between now and then, but right now we're still holding that date. I know um the U of I, we're hearing that they're going to be making some announcements about what they're doing in the fall in regard to in-person and face-to-face. So maybe when they make those announcements, they'll couple that with, you know, what they're doing for large events. So um, right now, Dr. Berenson and I are just kind of waiting until the end to see what the end of June brings.
Okay.
And and in regard to the Governor's Restore Illinois Plan and, you know, if anything changes with that, so, but we're still holding the date.
And and is the time the same time it would have been?
Oh, yes, still same time, eleven o'clock, I think it is.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, any other board reports?
I I just want to make a little observation so everybody knows that there are still graduation parties taking place in this community, because when I like to get out of the house and go do something, it's usually just to drive around, but we had a wonderful party up the street from me over the weekend. Great music. They looked like they were all having fun. I'm not sure who the graduate was, but uh there have been spontaneous ones that have just been all over my neighborhood, and I'm so glad to see that they, you know, people are coming together. I I get it, you know, they're doing their own thing and whatever, but, you know, they 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 are definitely being celebrated for for everything that's happened, so. Let's, you know, still a big shout out to them all. God bless them. You know, they're they're getting together when they can. Getting their families into town and everything that they were missing out on at, you know, the end of May.
Thanks, Ruth Ann. Um, I don't think there are any other, any of the reports, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye. No, sorry, no, 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 you're right. This is a roll call again. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Yeah, Member Carter?
Yes. Yes.
Member Demmett?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Pulaski?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Hall?
Yes, meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Everybody.